Yes. Okay, I'd like to call the -- to order the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, the village of Bartlett, counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane, to order at 7:00 o'clock. Please call the roll.
Mike Wearden.
Here.
George Cosio.
Here.
Bob Lucarle. Patty Hanson.
Here.
Robert Carney.
Here.
Linda Hanson.
Here.
Okay, you have before you the minutes from the June 5th meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the zoning board of appeals from June 5th, 2014.
Second. It's been moved by Patty, seconded by Robert. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Patty Hanson.
Yes.
Robert Carney.
Yes.
Linda Hanson.
Yes.
George Cosio.
Yes.
Mike Wearden.
Yes. First item on the agenda is case number 14-10, 511 Orchards Pass, fence variation. Are the petitioners present?
I need to, as president of the Orchards and Bartlett homeowners association, need to recuse myself.
Okay. We'll accept Patty's refusal. Please remind me to call her back for the next variation.
Yeah, please do that.
(Laughter). Are the petitioners present?
Yes.
Please come to the microphone, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes.
Yes.
It is.
Do we have the mailings, the newspaper, and the picture of the sign?
Yes.
Mark those as exhibits A, B, and C. For the record, please state your names.
Barbara McCoveyak.
Arthur McCoveyak.
Okay, go ahead and present your case.
We'd like to request that the variance to put in a six-foot fence. However, we'd like to change the existing fence that's about three and a half feet tall, but we would like to --
(Inaudible).
Gotcha. Okay. So, we'd like to apply for a variance in -- to be able to put a six-foot fence of not along the property line, but closer to the sidewalk, but yet 10 feet off of the sidewalk so that there is -- so that there is, I guess, if you're at the intersection, so that you can see straight down the road. Those pine trees affect that area, but we'd like to back it off about 10 feet so that it's a clear view down Bartlett Road or just in general, I guess, into the retention area. So, we'd like to put in a six-foot plastic fence or the fence that doesn't -- not the wooden fence that doesn't corrode, but the more solid, long-term one. And we'd like to put it around the whole property at that point or the whole backyard.
Okay, now, on this picture, it looks like it's somewhat translucent. Are we seeing?
That's just the picture.
The picture, okay.
The top, as you can see, the top foot of the fence is the lattice, so you can see through the top foot of the six-foot fence.
Okay, so the first five?
Is solid, yes. And there's a picture in your packet there, and we put a colored picture out on the dais for you. It's white. It's loose. It's loose, Mike.
Oh, yes. It's got the Home Depot label on the top.
The Home Depot. It's a loose piece of paper on your dais.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, here? Yeah, okay. All right.
And as you can see in the pictures, the last time they were here, they were looking to bring it one foot off of the property line. Now, they're bringing it back 10 feet.
Hmm.
And here's what it used -- that's what the first proposal was, and then, you know, this is the revised proposal.
We feel like now that it's going to be 10 feet back when you're standing in the intersection and all those trees are not -- are going to be gone, now people are going to see the oncoming traffic. So, I don't think it's going to block anything. And we also want our privacy.
Well, the life of the fence should be longer with this type of material than
what you have, right?
Right. Right. I mean, this is the existing fence, the three-foot one. It's kind of, I would say, at life's end. It's, I don't know, stain or anything would help. It's kind of corroded and not -- I mean, it's in okay shape, but it's not in perfect shape. But still, I mean, I guess the end goal is to still have that privacy, security, and that we're kind of looking for. So, that's why we figured if we backed it up 10 feet, it's kind of a happy median maybe between the two. There's that solution of putting in trees or pine trees or something, you know, where the fence is existing, and those trees could be six or seven feet tall. But I don't feel that that's kind of a long-term solution. I feel it's more like a short-term solution until the trees, you know?
And you would be pulling this other fence out, right?
Correct.
Yes. Because if we put those shrubs or, you know, by the time that actually grows together and everything, our kids are going to be older. So, we really don't need a full privacy fence at that point because our main goal right now is for the safety of the kids and just so we have privacy because there's, right now, there's Fourth of July. There's going to be hundreds of people walking by. And we, you know, you're there with your family on the porch, and everybody's like walking by, you know? Everybody doesn't.
Yes, I saw what you're talking about.
And it's not. We want to feel comfortable.
Did I hear you say that the trees between the sidewalk and your proposed fence would be removed?
Yes.
They can be or they can stay. And with that, I'm totally -- some of them are -- have -- are kind of dead and they're dry, so some of them, I'm sure, would get removed, but they don't all need to be. There's been, actually, last year, two trees that did literally, I mean, I don't know if they were planted too close together, and now as they're growing, the roots are sort of -- and the roots are kind of, I don't know, I don't know if they're smushed, but they're literally dying. You can walk up to the tree and just lift it out and it's dead.
Wow.
So, there's a few of those in there that I'm sure would ultimately be removed. They don't all have to be. They can, I mean, they can stay.
Are you planning to do any shrubbery on the outside of the fence, on the street side?
I think the first thing would be to, if anything, where the fence was, because the grass is not really too nice over there, we would just lay in a new lawn around, you know, around where the smaller existing fence is. Because of, again, of all those roots and things like that, there really isn't grass growing where the existing three-foot fence is. And then if we left it, if we left those trees, and then there's also a big pine tree that you can kind of see in the background between the trees and the proposed fence?
Still, it's working.
Oh, that's still? That, so that pine tree would kind of stay there, so I don't know that we'd right away add any more shrubs.
I have to say that for years, I've thought that the three-foot fence on side lots was too low, and I was typically in favor of four-foot fences on side lots like this. Fundamentally, I still have a problem with a six-foot fence on a side lot.
I mean, I, our whole thing, like, again, you know, is really just that safety and security feeling that we want to have being in our own backyard. And like my wife brought up with Fourth of July, you know, people coming and these cups and they're right now with the carnival and fair that's going on, you know, people with their ICs and stuff like that, throwing it in the yard. I don't know, it's just really not that feeling of safety, security. And then you have these other streets where you kind of go down that also there's corner lots. If you go to the, what's the next street?
Foster, I believe.
Next street, down the street.
Could you speak into the microphone? Very difficulty.
If you go down Struckman, and you're on the corner of like Struckman and Bartlett, a lot of those corner lots have, you know, almost every single lot over there has that six-foot fence. And I mean, Struckman is a lot, or I would say Bartlett is a lot busier road than Struckman is.
Actually, from even from the last time I took addresses down and I took pictures of the houses along with their fences, some of them even have, I believe it's higher than six feet. You go down Sterns Road, every single house pretty much sits on the corner, has a six-foot fence. That's full privacy.
But even with the six-foot fence, it's just the whole, I don't know, is it the whole fact of the fence just being there that you don't really like? Or, I'm just trying to understand because if, you know, if we weren't to put into the six-foot fence and we were to put, for example, the tall, you know, shrubs that grow into each other, and there really wouldn't be a fence there, but it would really have the same effect, and I don't know that it would look as nice as the proposed fence because obviously the fence is taken care of. It's there, and once you put it in, it stays. It's shiny, it looks nice. Where shrubs and trees, you know, you don't know how they're going to take, if they're going to look nice or not nice. I mean, I think it's just as difficult to take care of.
And we would have a problem with shrubs because there's a lot of people walking with their dogs, and dogs are just right there peeing. I think even the fence we have right now, I mean, sometimes I even wanted to take a picture to bring it here, how even the dogs are peeing on that fence. And I don't think shrubs would be actually growing or those, what are those trees called? The tulie trees.
At the end of the day, I think, it's just, I think it's much harder to even try and maintain something like that versus just putting in a nice fence.
You know, my only thing is I go, I, I'm outside with the kids, I need to go to the bathroom. I can't leave them there. I can't leave them there for a minute because I don't know if somebody's going to step over that fence or not. So, I, each time I have to go into the house, I got to take them with me, whether it's --
It's the whole fact that you can reach over the fence. It's not really that you can step over, but you can reach over. Anyone of an average, male or female, of an average height of five foot or anything can reach over the fence and obviously pull anything out. We had a dog once, and that's kind of what happened. So, you know, obviously, you can imagine how low you have to reach to get a little dog, but, you know, that happened. So, if that happened to a puppy, what's that to say that it won't happen to a kid or?
I see a lot of positive things in what you've done this time over last time. As George has said, I too have always thought that the three-foot fence was too low. I was always in favor of like 42 inches or something. We've always kind of shied away from the higher fences, and I've never liked it along the sidewalk. I think the fact that you have it set back and the material, it's not going to look dilapidated like the wooden fences. Everybody likes these wooden fences, and I'll tell you, after about three or four years, they start looking so dilapidated, they're eyesores. I'd rather see the cyclone where you can still see nature through it or bushes or whatever. You have an unusual circumstance because I have driven past there a lot back and forth, and I notice, I mean, it is a busy area, and I can see where you would like some privacy. We typically don't like blocking views, but you are pulling it back, and because you have kind of a public lands area behind you where there's some creek waters there coming through, you know, it's, you don't have privacy in the backyard. I can see what you're saying about the kids. I think the material that you're using with the extra design on there might set a better precedent for people wanting to put taller fences. I don't normally like the taller fences, but I think this one, more than any I've seen in recent history, is more tastefully done, and I would be more open to looking at this than what I normally see.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And again, like I said, the trees, I don't know, I'm assuming we wouldn't want to remove trees is kind of the question.
Well, if they're not dead, I would like to see the trees stay, but...
No, to not remove them, just have them stay.
You know, when we have problems, I, you know, I lost a birch when we had the birch problem. I've lost an ash when we had the ash problem, and I hear rumors that maples are going to be next in line, and I got maple trees now, so it's like, what do you do?
No, I mean, the trees can stay. That's not an issue. That's something that we can maintain. It's obviously the branches go onto the sidewalk and things like that, but I don't think that's critical or different, and maybe it even puts some shade, I guess, onto the backyard.
Now, I realize these are examples. The picture we have is white, and that's what, kind of like a rusty red? Is that what?
Pictures for the example.
Just for, okay, just to...
(Inaudible).
Okay, okay, okay. So, what color are you planting?
White.
White, a white, okay.
Just like the whole picture, white.
The siding of the house.
Exactly that same way. I believe that the bottom is about five feet or just shy of five feet, and then that last top portion is a foot.
Okay.
My biggest concern with, I mean, I'm still not a fan of six-foot fences either way on the side like that, but again, where you want your privacy, everybody wants their privacy. You picked a core lot, you picked a busy intersection, your sense of privacy kind of gets skewed a little bit. Everybody that has six-foot fences in that area matches what's there. The 509, either Eastwick or, it's Eastwick, which is at the corner of Foster and Bartlett Road, they have a six-foot fence which matches the privacy along Bartlett Road. They also have a three- or four-foot fence along Foster, and it continues on the Bartlett Road, and it progresses up to meet the six-foot fence that runs from Foster all the way to Struckman, that six-foot fence. While his is in best shape, it still progresses in height. I can't recall what 524's height is on Foster. 510 is on Orchards Pass has the six-foot fence because it meets the business behind it.
Right.
They have a six-foot fence that they installed, so theirs meets it. Your neighbor, I believe, has a five-foot fence of which now you're going to have a five-foot and a six-foot next to each other if this is approved.
Can I ask you which neighbor? Is it the one across the retention?
The one that, no, the one that you're attached to.
That's our, I don't have a...
She doesn't have a fence.
In the rear of the property, there isn't a...
That's our fence that was...
No.
I think those lines are just for mapping purposes.
And then also the one that you're saying on Foster, they're along the side of the sidewalk, and their fence goes up. They're not 10 feet into their backyard.
Okay. And then the other thing with you guys moving it 10 feet off the property line, the pictures that we see on here don't really do it justice. 10 feet's a good amount off of that line, and you have the shed tucked right in the corner there. I mean, you're cutting your backyard virtually in half. You're going to lose your backyard. And so, I mean, it's your property, and that's what you are trying to do, but think of someone down the line, the first thing they're going to do is want a bigger backyard. And you've got two little kids that want to run, you've cut that backyard in half.
We're not cutting it. If we were to cut it in half, it would be 25 feet, and we would not be asking for a permit for a variance. And also, we're doing it. If we ever were to sell the house, if somebody doesn't like the fence, they could always take it down and do whatever they would like to do with it. We're not planning right now, and this is what we need. This is why we're here, and this is, we want to be 10 feet into the backyard. We thought this through, and this is what we want.
I don't, I don't think that the people that lived there before us took into consideration of the next people that are going to live in the house. And I mean, I don't, I think, you know, if, that's the whole thing is obviously, I wouldn't want to go 10 feet off the property line, but that's kind of the sacrifice that we're willing to take to have that little bit of privacy.
You know, if I could...
If I could, I'd like to have the six-foot fence right on the property line, but we've already gone down that route, and it didn't work out. So, I, you know, I know that we're cutting the yard by 10 feet, but I really think that's kind of our choice, and it's a choice and a sacrifice that we're willing to take to have that privacy. Like I said, and I mean, if somebody down the road wants to have 10 feet more of space, well, then they can put a four-foot fence back in. I mean, I really don't, I'm not, I don't know, I really don't necessarily feel sympathetic for the next homeowner when nobody feels something like for me. Because if they did, they could have applied for a variance at some point. I mean, the people, I mean, I don't know, it's hard for me to say. At the same time, someone, the next person that moves in could have Doberman that they're going to have as a pet that they might need to have behind the fence, you know? It's kind of like...
Well, I have to say a couple of things. I'm glad to see that you were willing to move the fence back 10 feet.
Yes.
That's a big commitment on your part.
Yes.
You're giving up your land to put it outside the fence. And the white vinyl fence is an improvement, in my mind, over a wood picket or a wood stockade, and the basket weave on the top makes it even more interesting. You get the height, you get the security, and it, boy, it would be nice if that was setting a precedent for future fences along this area. I still have a problem with the height of the fence, but this is a big positive commitment on your part, and I think you've tried to work with us.
We are trying to work with you.
I would agree, and if you're coming up Bartlett Road north from Struckman, that probably is going to be the nicest-looking fence that there is. And I think there's something with, as he was saying, with precedent setting. I don't like six-foot fences unless they're on the back lot. We very rarely prove something like that, I think, but I could live with what you are proposing because it is a busy area, and I can see the concern with the kids and so forth. And if even, there's kind of like a dual guarantee with it being 10 feet off the sidewalk, you don't have to worry about the dogs going over and urinating on it or people peaching over your fence to get your kids, or your kids trying to climb it to get something that's on the sidewalk, you know? And it does have that little extra design that gives it a little bit of openness on the top.
I mean, we are, we want our house to look nice. When we moved in, this was foreclosure. So, we changed the whole siding, we did the patio. There was no patio before, there was just sand. We did the asphalt in front of the house. We've been only there for two years, so we're actually, we do want it to look nice.
I mean, the thing is, with it looking that nice, perhaps people whose fences are deteriorating south of you along Bartlett Road would consider something like this instead of these wooden fences that are high maintenance and just do not look pretty after a few years.
It would be nice to be able to point to this one in the future and say...
Yes, maybe, maybe you could do the same. We were opposed to this to look how nice it looks. I would like to tell people that.
No, that's really the case. That's why, you know, we want to try and...
I would like it at 5 feet, but the fact that you have some openness on the top and...
I don't think there's 5-foot fences. I think you would have to make a custom maybe.
I know. You don't have a whole lot of choice.
I looked into it because I thought about that, and that's why, that's why we picked that design with the foot on top with the crosses so that you can somewhat see through.
You know, if you, it's like when you go down Newport, you get the canyon effect because everybody has a six-foot deteriorating wooden fence, and it's even worse if you've ever been on Wise Road east of Plum Grove, well, before it turns into Beasterfield, going into Elk Grove, it's a real canyon effect because it's narrow there. And it just, it blocks sight, you, it just, it's very unnatural, you know? I think you're doing a good blend here because you're not boxing in the whole property, and you're still going to have a parkway effect because the sidewalk is going to be not right next to the street, nor is it going to be next to the fence.
Mm-hmm.
That part I do like. Anyone else before we open it up to the public? At this point, I shall open it up to the public. Anyone in the audience have anything to say? Did you? Are there forms there?
Pardon me?
Are there forms there?
Yes.
Yes, they're here.
We'll go ahead. That way, we're going to have to swear you in. Just give us your name and address, and then fill that out and give it to the board.
Yeah, because I was here last time. My name is Donna Zammer, and I live two doors from them at 519.
Could you speak up into the mic, please?
When we were here last time, I sat and listened to all the objections in talking to them and seeing what they've proposed to you now. Every objection that I heard the last time, they have changed, and they have worked with everyone as best they could. They've come back because you all wanted it back. You didn't want a totally five, six-foot fence that was completely blocked off. They've changed that. Coming out, in fact, my husband, he, we stopped in front of their house tonight, and he walked it off. They're not blocking anything anymore. That was the main objection before, that they were blocking it. And then I was coming down on Sterns, and you all keep talking about there aren't six-foot fences. Somebody was putting up a six-foot fence that went the entire property right on the sidewalk yesterday. They've moved theirs back. It's going to be beautiful. None of the, none of us who live right there, including this gentleman, the people, the woman that lives right connected to them, none of us object to it. We all think it's great. So, I hope you see how much they've worked with it and tried to see.
Well, that's the purpose of a public hearing, and to me, some of my decision goes into what do the people that have to look at it feel? And in your case, and that's why I generally ask, have you had any comments from the public? Any phone calls? Anyone had anything to say? Because sometimes people, if they don't have to say something public and they have something negative, you know, well, you know, if you're not going to come to the meeting, I really don't care how you feel, but if you're, if you're willing to come here and you're the ones that are going to look at it, you're already living there. Okay, we need to consider what you have to say too.
There is...
And the fact is, if you're, it doesn't matter if you're driving along South Bartlett Road and coming north, and you see all these six-foot fences, from a driver's perspective, it doesn't matter if that's their backyard or not, and so, we're not really going to be that concerned, is this their backyard or their side yard? There is going to be some uniformity if they're all the same height. I don't like 6 feet, but, you know, I can see some of the privacy issue. We all like to think that we have some privacy. I mean, I've lived in Bartlett over 50 years, there was only 1,500 people when I came here, so I could, I know what you mean about privacy. But yes, I'm impressed that they have worked with us. I'm impressed that they're trying to get into some type of conformity where it would be approved. I have to admire them for doing the fast work and coming back this fast. I mean, this is not a common thing. Either people give up or they badmouth or whatever, and, you know, they're trying to do something about it. So, I'm impressed with that.
Well...
I don't talk positively about six-foot fences, and I am doing that tonight.
We, as the neighbors, wanted you to know how we all felt.
I'm impressed. I'm glad that you said that.
We have no objection. I think it's great. I think it's great for the kids. I think it's going to be a beautiful fence. When we were here the last time, there was a neighbor evidently that had sent a letter in, but it was a positive letter, that they had no objections to it, so even a neighbor that was unable to come had sent.
Yes, and we answer that as an exhibit.
So, right.
Right.
So, you know, none of us object. We hope you vote for it.
You better have your neighbor over for cake and coffee on the fourth. Anyone else? Okay, at this point, I shall close the public hearing portion. Any further discussion from the board?
Excuse me?
Yes. Good to have an, okay, we'll leave it open.
My name is Nilo, and I live just opposite to the 510. I live in a 512. Ah, 510, I live opposite to 512. And I've been driving many times from my house, from my house going to work, turning right in this corner, and I've been trying to figure out the six-foot tall fence, if it's really giving hindrance to a motorist, and I don't see any problem with it. I see the space from the Orchards Pass to the next corner still far enough to have the six-foot tall fence, and I fully support the request, as well as of our neighbors, to have the six-foot fence approved, as I think they deserve that.
Well, and I think we talked about the vision triangle and seeing what's coming down the road, but let's face it, if you had that right next to the sidewalk, the car might not be the problem. Might be some hot rod on a skateboard coming down the sidewalk, and sometimes they move with such speed, or a couple of 10-speed bikers on the sidewalk, and you might not see them because the fence is, at least this is sitting back, I don't think that would be a problem as it would have been before.
But still, you have probably 15 to 20 feet from the corner before the...
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Sure.
Any discussion or motions?
I would make a motion to pass along a positive recommendation to the board to approve the request for variation for a six-foot fence set back 10 feet from the property line.
Okay, at this point now, we'll close the public hearing. We have a positive motion. Anyone second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by George, seconded by Linda. Any further discussion? Again, I think we need to commend you for what you've done, and for, and the positive remarks from neighbors that would be looking at it, that goes a long way. Okay, please call the roll.
George Coziel.
Yes.
Linda Hanson.
Yes.
Robert Carney.
Yes.
Mike Wearden.
Yes. Okay, it takes, we have a quorum of four out of seven members, so we pass on a positive recommendation to the board, stay in touch with Roberto, to find out when it appears on the agenda, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming back. Now we can call back Patty.
Aren't I a lucky person, huh?
Yes, thank you very much.
Is that likely going, that likely would get on the agenda soon, Roberto? That would likely get on the board's agenda soon? Okay, Patty is back with us, next item on the agenda is case fourteen dash fourteen, thirteen thirteen Richmond Lane. Please come forward, up to the microphone, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes.
Okay, do we have the evidence of the mailing, the newspaper publication, the picture of the sign?
Yes.
Mark those as exhibits A, B, and C, please state your name and address for the record.
Ernest McRarity, thirteen thirteen Richmond Lane, Bartlett, Illinois.
Frank Pollack, the contractor, one-two-three Mayflower, Batavia, Illinois.
Okay, go ahead and present your case.
We are looking for, if you look at our deck, our lot goes on an angle, and we're trying to put an addition off the back that goes even with the deck, but due to the code, we're overstepping it by about five feet. So, we just wanna make it even with the deck, and take, I think it's five feet into the building line. If it was on the other side of the house, we wouldn't have this problem. The lot angles.
I see.
Part of the problem is, because they designed a subdivision with winding roads, he's got extra property left and right of the house, like an eighteen-foot side yard, and he could barely put a three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-foot addition on the back of his house, so...
Is it a two-story addition, or a three-story?
Two-story. Right now, the house has got a walkout basement, so that's the level we're matching, that's gonna be his, his kind of office, personal office. The upstairs, where you see those windows, that are kind of covered by the red, that, we're not going up to that level. That's the third floor, that's just to keep the peak and the symmetry, I believe, in correlation with everything.
Okay, my question, which is always seems to be my question, what are you doing in the line of siding and roofing compared to the existing property?
Oh, we're matching what is there now.
Still, it's new enough that you can match the siding?
Yeah, it's close enough, it's got a different brand name, but the color is the same, and the style is the same, it's just a different thickness. And the roofing also, yeah, should be able to match that without a problem.
Siding's only about four years old. The house was recited about four years ago.
It had hail damage, so the roofing and siding are obviously gable.
Okay, so it's still available?
Go ahead, okay.
Yes.
So no other configurations would be changing outside with like the deck area, or the stairs, or anything?
Nothing is changing, only thing that's changing, if you look at a picture of the back again, on the very, on the very top, where those two windows are covered by the red, obviously, you need egress windows, so those windows are moving to the east side of the house, we're putting... You have to conform to the other codes. Right, yeah, so two windows are gonna be on either side of the fireplace.
Yeah. That was gonna be my next question, is, so we were, we're gonna remove those windows, because it's gonna be blocked by the new roof?
Correct.
Right. Okay.
And there's a picture probably somewhere of the windows being on the other side.
I just, I didn't make copy of this.
Okay. You didn't show all three views.
I'm mostly concerned with this.
Thanks, Roberto. I'm dying over here. And in the base, the reason we're, obviously, the reason we're doing two floors is, we have a walkout basement. I have a seven-year-old and a three-year-old, and along my basement, my wife and I are avid workout people, we have a treadmill, we have a bike, we have a weight set, I have a bench, I have about a thousand pounds worth of weights, can't let my kids and their friends play in the basement, because I'm afraid someone's gonna get killed. So, in the lower level, where you see those two doors, that room is gonna be a locked-off weight room slash exercise room. The other one's a utility room for a furnace. It does this addition, because it's so far away from the existing furnace, it would need its own. Right. And one of the other things too, is the house has like a seven-foot existing basement, and everybody, like me, I would feel like I'm scraping my head on the ceiling as I walk through it. And if you're exercising, if you notice that the architect drew that a little higher, and so you have to step up into this addition.
On the second floor.
On the second floor. Actually, the first floor of the house. Yeah.
Yeah, it gets confusing depending on what, where your perspective is, right?
Yeah. But that was one of the reasons, and the original size of the house, it's a good-sized house, I'm not saying it's not, but it's configured, kind of goofy, I have like one place for a TV, one place for a couch. The existing family room's twelve feet wide by twenty, it's like, it would be more usable if it was sixteen by seventeen.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, so...
You get to where there's only one place the couch can go, there's only one place this can go.
Exactly. And my couch and TV have been in the same place for fifteen years.
I have neighbors in the living room, there's only one outlet on the north wall, and one on the south wall, and you have to walk past the hallway to get to the kitchen, so you can't really put anything blocking that. I mean, it's like, things aren't planned out all the time. I know what you mean.
We believe we planned this pretty well, this part, we've been working on this for a couple of years, trying to figure it out and decide to do it, and we've decided that now is the time. Been talking about it for a while. Because Roberto rushed us yesterday.
Well, we don't usually have holiday eve meetings too often, do we?
Yeah.
Have we had any calls from anybody?
No.
Comments? No, okay. It looks like it would be tastefully done. Any further discussion? We'll open it up to the public, anyone in the teeming audience have anything to say? Nobody's breaking down the fence and doors to say anything? Any further discussion or motions?
Well, I have to make one comment, I think, I think when this is done, it's gonna look as if it was there all along, and it seems to be done in good taste. Good luck on it.
Thank you.
Are you making a motion?
I'd make a motion to pass the village board for a positive, to approve the variation for the rear yard, for the five-foot requested variation.
Second.
Case movement, George, seconded by Robert, any further discussion? At this point, we shall close the public hearing portion, please call the roll.
George Coziel.
Yes.
Robert Carney.
Yes.
Eddie Hanson.
Yes.
Linda Hanson.
Yes.
Mike Wearden.
Yes. Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the board, stay in touch with Roberto to find out when it appears on the agenda. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a nice holiday.
Thank you, you too.
Old business, new business, anything?
Not today.
We have none.
Huh, okay.
Happy Fourth of July.
Yeah.
And any motion to...
Like a make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
One foolish enough to oppose, okay, the ayes have it.